It's 6:30. I've called a meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Cedarburg School Board. It's a public meeting. Prior notices have been placed in the district. An additional copy is reported to the city and town of Cedarburg, as well as the news graphic in the Milwaukee Journal. Set now. Please drive me to the conference room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
State proclamation.
This evening, we have the following proclamations. The state of Wisconsin has issued the following proclamations. November 14th to 18th, 2022 is American Education Week. And December 5th to 11th, 2022, Computer Science Education Week. All proclamations are available on the district website.
With regards to consent agenda, board members, I ask that you approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on November 16th, 2022, the budget and finance report, which includes the summary of account, check register, check detail, and credit card transaction reports, and the personnel report. And Mr. Carter, Director of Human Resources, will provide a brief overview of the personnel report.
Thank you. This evening, we have one retirement request for approval before the board from Krista Hartling, a teacher at Thorson. And we have one employment contract for Director Billings Brown and Brian Broxner for the 23-24 school year.
Questions or a motion?
How move approval?
Alex Duncan.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions passed unanimously. Superintendent Record.
All right. This evening, we will provide the board with three updates. The first update will be the ASHR3 grant safe return to in-person instruction and continuity of services plan update given by Mr. Irland.
Good evening. So as part of the federal requirements for ASHR3 grant, the board must review the safe return in-person instruction and continuity of service plan every six months through September 30th to 23. At this time, there are going to be no changes to that plan. It's required of the board to receive those funds. And as of this summer, we're scheduled to receive just over $2.6 million that we're using for this year and next year to balance our budget for school districts.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, I want to provide the board a brief update regarding our fall periodic testing. We're going to get the screen turned on in just a second. Each year, K-8, our K-8 through 8th grade students participate in the series of interim assessments that allow us to measure their academic growth through the school year. For the first time this year, our students took the iReady assessment in math and reading. What I have up here on the screen are just a little overview for each of the grades, where you look at the grade and you see grade zero, that's kindergarten. And this represents the percent of students who were at or above grade level in the fall, based on the iReady map. This is the first of three tests we will take. We'll take another one in January and then one later on in the spring. And by taking a look at where our students started this school year, working toward the end of the school year, we're able to determine where their growth is. Right now, and by this itself, this data is just a benchmark data. It doesn't necessarily tell us anything. It will be throughout the school year that will help us make more direction. Although our teachers are using this iReady data, this one right here is math. We also have in reading to help direct some of the instruction that are being provided in our classrooms and provide the students the learning that they need. As we take a look at this school year, I wanted to also share some of the things that we've changed going into this year. From a science standpoint, we do have full implementation of the Rocket Buck as a science module. And then in grades two and three, we have a couple of pilots running, phonics to reading, and reading rap. Again, focus on those is how we can continue to meet all of the reading needs for each of our students. At the middle school, we have full implementation of illustrative math in grades six through eight. The high school also participated in some fall testing. This year, the all students took the pre-ACT. The prior years, students had taken the ACT Aspire. The entire state has changed over to the pre-ACT. Again, this provides our students the opportunity to get some experience in the ACT, which all students take in the spring of their junior year. Our students took assessments in math, reading, science, and English, in which you write here is the percent of students on or above target in the fall in math, reading, science, English. And this provides an overall composite score. And for those of you familiar with the ACT, we know that when students take ACT, it's generally a composite score that they share and use with colleges.
Can you share what the grade level target composite score is? Like, what is it, is it a number like five or three?
Oh, I can look that up, and I can get that to you. But no, I don't. I couldn't tell you what that is right now for the fall.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
Give us a good perspective on where we are.
Where they're at, yeah.
Senator Fielding, do you get this, the fall version? Is there a spring one that's done at the end of the school year or towards the end of the school year?
There is. This is the one time for the year. In the spring, the students will take the Wisconsin battery of tests are, which, and again, I know they're still the pre-ACT in the spring. Eric, do you know? Yes. So they're going to take it again. The juniors will take the full ACT.
If I could kind of follow up with a question about the iReady scores?
Yes.
One of the first slides.
Yep.
We didn't have that in the past. Did we do that last year?
No. We had used the math.
Yeah, exactly. So we don't really have the ability to go back and see what the summer slide was and things like that. It's really a starting point now going forward. Hopefully, we can look at that and see how students are learning. That will be retested again in the fall.
Correct.
The other quick comment, sorry to keep you down.
No, I got this.
In looking at these, it looked like English did really well, but math, science, oh no, math, science, and English all went down a little bit. And the reading, I think, stayed very well.
Yep.
So it's something to look at, and each department should look at and kind of consider what we can be doing to reverse that trend.
Correct.
Do you think there's any COVID implications?
You know, I would want to say yes. I mean, as you read the research and you hear what's gone all over, you know, especially for the kids for the last couple of years, it has impacted it. Cedarburg, the last couple of years hasn't been yet impacted as dramatically as many other districts, but there certainly is an impact of learning loss that did occur.
Because that math, I mean, that's really a big problem.
Yep.
George, do you or student have some reasoning of why the ninth grade scores for some of these pre-ACT ones were so much higher than the 10th and 11th grades?
You know, at this point, no. Again, this is the first time our kids really, the ninth grade has done the pre-ACT. So we don't have past data to be able to look at. We know that we've made some changes in math over the last couple of years, although the fall change is this year with illustrative math. And so our, yes, our thought is maybe that has had dramatic impact, but we don't know yet. And that's the stuff that we're digging into.
That class was the one that was highly.
Yep.
And you also have, like, different cohorts of students that might just overall score lower on the standardized test over the years. And I think we might be in one of those years.
Yeah, it's possible.
I think the older you are, the more impact COVID has on your test scores. You're taking more advanced math class, you know, 11 years or a year or two ago than the ninth graders were. And maybe that's possible, too. Hopefully, we can get those trends moving.
Do you get the chemistry issue or the chemistry?
All right. So that was my presentation. Again, just wanted to be able to get that data out there, let them take a look at it after the winter testing. We'll pull the data together again and share it again.
Hopefully, it stays standardized for a few years so you can get data out instead of switching it off.
Finally, I'd like to give a brief update regarding the 22-23 school year. As many of you know, today was the last day of school before winter break. Target believed that the next school day will be next year. As we began approaching this holiday season, our students participated in numerous concerts and activities. Last Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend the afternoon Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra performance in our CPAC with our fourth and seventh grade students and our high school choir students. It was an exciting and engaging concert and a pleasure to watch with enjoyment. I also had the privilege of watching the 4K holiday concert at Thorson yesterday at 4:00. It was impressive to watch the young ones perform. I also want to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of our staff for the dedication and tireless work they have put forth every day for each of our students.
That takes us to public comment. There is a list of people who signed up to speak. So I will read the legal disclaimer. Any district staff member, resident, parent of a district student or student enrolled in the district may comment during public comment. Portion of the meeting per board policy 167.3. For this meeting, the community may address the board during the public comment section on any topic within legitimate jurisdiction of the board. Individuals making public comment are not immune from liability during public comment and can be held liable for defamation or false claims. In the past, the state attorney general issued guidance on how government bodies such as school boards should conduct the public comment portion of their meetings. The guidance was given to assist the government bodies in avoiding violations of the state's open meeting law. The essence of the open meeting law guidance is that unless a topic is brought forward to the board is publicly noticed, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed on an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for the attorney general's guidance is to ensure that all interested parties have equal opportunity and advance notice to participate in the discussions with the full board. Per board policy 0167.3, the board has the authority to determine if public comment may be taken and if allowed on what portion of the agenda comment will be received. Per board policy 144.2, the board will respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under the laws that includes but is not limited to information under current or imminent litigation or student-specific information per board policy 8330. If the item is not listed, if your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you want to have a discussion regarding the topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda for public comment. As always, you are also encouraged to contact board members outside of the meeting setting with your comments and concerns. Please note, board members are limited to public engagement via email as noted in board policy 167.5. Please make your comments to the board and not to individuals in the audience as per board policy 167.3. Each statement made by a participant shall not exceed three minutes in duration. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with the courtesy and respect you would like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. Please state the topic you're commenting on. If you are under the age of 18 or are a student in the Cedarburg schools, please only state your first name. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and will go posted on the district's website. Scott Sidney.
Scott Sidney, North 40 West 65, 22, Datchet Street, Cedarburg, talking on SEL and Second Step. We thank Dr. Clark and the staff for their diligence in reviewing the Second Step program and seeking alternatives and allowing parental choice in any future program. And Board President Rick Leach also struck the right tone, advising that board members shouldn't micromanage the process. We rewrote these comments after watching a documentary, Young Plato, on how a boys' school in Ireland teaches character and ethics. We suppose this is a version of SEL, but one based on philosophies written throughout the ages. The review of Second Step occurred because parents discovered Second Step was in use and questioned the curriculum. A news article suggested the board was unaware. Others asserted there was previous approval. We began questioning SEL. And after our last board comments, parents promoting SEL took to social media calling us a moron, uneducated, and uninformed. This is a problem. Parents unaware of program usage, confusion over Second Step origins and approvals, objections characterized as ignorance. The question isn't should certain social concepts be taught, but what should they be and who should teach them? The answer in the documentary seemed pretty clear. Teach character and ethics from time-honored philosophical traditions. Teach concepts in classroom settings. Teach them on an individual basis as wayward behavior occurs. And teach parents the same concepts to reinforce at home. When parents and teachers are not using the same concepts, not addressing issues uniformly, children will inevitably receive mixed messages, confusion results. When there's thousands of years of philosophical teaching and proper ethical behavior, is there really a need to employ faddish, untested theories? We ask you to develop a program based on active instruction for all stakeholders, parents, children, and teachers, and develop a curriculum to include time-honored ideals. Thank you.
Nicole Schmidt.
Nicole Schmidt, City District, addressing agenda of math. Four years ago, CSD professionals provided a presentation to the school board about SEL curriculum. The school board purchased the Second Step program, and it has been successfully implemented since then. This school year began with the expectation that our students would be receiving social emotional learning, which includes bullying prevention and child protective units. This was abruptly paused. And according to the September 20th email, it would only be temporary to allow for new board procedures and approvals. What actually happened was the curriculum committee was given the opportunity to review materials and follow Superintendent Dr. Clark and CSD school psychologists' recommendation to forward the program to the full board for approval. Instead, Mr. Krier and Ms. Irland rejected this recommendation, which meant the pause could have ended on October 26th. But the full board, including Mr. Leach, Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Mettle, Mr. Roble, and Mr. Moll, was blocked from even having the ability to come to a consensus. These resources purchased by the school board should not be paused any longer. Fortunately, there has been some protection for certain components of SEL, such as the federal requirement to provide bullying education. However, only allowing lessons about bullying without providing important background learning is not going to be as effective for bullying prevention. These lessons should not be taught in isolation. CSD students are still even blocked from receiving protective skills that's aimed at child abuse prevention and empowering children to feel safe to report abuse. How could you take this away from our children? I'm truly asking. Because according to a document filed by the district, you claim SEL lessons, specifically Second Step, is an example of how the district is in compliance with Act 31 laws. But by pausing this curriculum, the board is even less compliant with Act 31 laws. This was not a temporary pause to resolve some procedural error. You have removed SEL supports and resources. How is this ethical? How is this transparent? Most importantly, how is this beneficial to our students? It's not. These lessons should be explicitly taught. They are tied to academic standards on report cards. Provide consistency, transparency, effective homeschool collaboration. We need to ensure that social emotional learning is not paused any longer.
Erica Polly.
Erica Polly, W 79 and 413 Ridgeway Lane, Cedarburg. I'm going to speak on social emotional learning as well. I am the parent of four children at Parkview Elementary School. I am frustrated, to say the least, with the removal of Second Step curriculum from Cedarburg schools. As a parent, I talk to my children about empathy and responsibility. I teach them problem-solving tools and calming strategies. I have three children that have received years of Second Step. I use that common language with them at home because it's easy for them to understand and is consistent with the language that is used at school. At home, we work on these skills as situations present themselves, such as disagreements with siblings or frustration with homework. But my kids are in school seven hours a day. They are with their teachers more than they are with me at home. These are skills that need to be universally taught and reinforced. Using common language that they already know and strategies that have been taught prior to an emotionally elevated situation is going to help them solve a problem or a disagreement in an appropriate way. As adults, if we aren't mentally strong, we aren't going to be productive. The same is true for children. They need to have the tools to regulate their emotions and handle challenging situations in order to perform their best academically. Recently, I've had the opportunity to work as a school psychologist at Parkview and Thorson elementary schools. I have taught the bullying prevention units to first through fifth graders. These units are from the Second Step curriculum. I saw firsthand how students in Cedarburg schools benefit from that common language instruction. Students in fourth and fifth grade who have had years of Second Step instruction remember that common language and can continue to build on their understanding in an age-appropriate way. They can articulate problems using the language and skills that are taught. Teachers can reinforce these skills because all students have a universal understanding because they are all taught the same. We use math and reading, a math and reading curriculum that builds and uses consistent language from grade level to grade level because we know this increases how children learn. The same is true for social emotional learning. Consistency and common language is essential to allow children to build the tools necessary for handling big emotions, disagreements, and frustrating situations. As parents, when we have questions or concerns about our children, we seek out experts in that area. If our children are sick, we call the expert their pediatrician. If the child breaks a bone, we see an orthopedic surgeon, the expert. Cedarburg School District has experts in social emotional learning. Those experts have shared data and research indicating why Second Step is a necessity in our schools. Listen to the experts in our district. Cedarburg Schools employs high-quality educators. Listen to those high-quality educators who have extensive training and experience in the social emotional health of children. To my knowledge, there is no one on the board who has an education background or an expertise in social emotional health. Therefore, I urge you to listen to the experts that this district employs, and your experts are telling you to reinstate Second Step for social emotional learning. Thank you.
Sarah Blunquist.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Blunquist, N 56, W 5507, Sunny Side Lane, Cedarburg. I'm curious, how did pulling the 2010 SEL curriculum in the fall 2022 from CSD benefit students? And why? If there has been no decision on merit of the curriculum yet, why is it not reinstated? And then how did half the lessons get removed? To me, it sounds like decisions have been made based on some subjective thought as to the merit of the curriculum. Is it because some school board members think parents are the only ones to teach SEL or that only particular students benefit from it? Do some of you really believe that learning skills such as assertiveness, self-advocacy, how to report abuse, and proper conflict management creates a victim mentality? Or is it because the local Moms for Liberty County Chapter and other radical special interest groups promote conspiracy theories regarding SEL? Do some of you really believe, as some of these conspiracy theories promote, that SEL is a tool used to groom kids into the gay and transgender cult and teach them CRT as well? Does being gay mean you are part of a cult? It is no secret that this nebulous, if wasn't approved properly, catalyst for pulling the curriculum has been similarly played out in school districts across the country at the hands of Moms of Liberty. What has the Teacher Engagement Council board representative reported from their interactions with the teachers? What have the teachers observed? Do they think its removal is benefiting classroom learning? How does altering teachers' classroom planning and management after the school year started and then disrupting the democratic process by ignoring recommendations of said teachers fill mutual respect where teachers feel supported? I thought that was the goal of elected for some of you. How many complaints have you received versus how many in support of SEL? For the first time ever, all five CSD schools have exceeded expectations based on the 2020, 21-22 school year report card, not based on the Fall '22 quarterly report card that Mr. Scott Sidney erroneously referenced. This first happened after the 2010 Second Step curriculum was knowingly implemented. If next year, all five schools don't exceed or significantly exceed expectations, how will you defend this decision? Lastly, you reinstituted the bullying curriculum. Thank you to Mr. Leach for encouraging that because state law requires it. So why would you stop teaching the 2010 Second Step SEL this fall when you use it to justify your compliance with state law regarding Act 31?
Thank you. Morgan Scott.
Morgan Scott, W 80, N 402 Prairie New Road, Cedarburg. My name is Morgan Scott. I'm a Cedarburg resident and mom of two. I am here today to request that Second Step be reinstated as part of Cedarburg School District curriculum. I want to start by sharing research from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, otherwise known as DPI. As you all know, DPI is a state agency that advances public education in our state of Wisconsin. Just 15 days ago, on December 6th, they published statewide youth risk behavior survey data. This is a voluntary, excuse me, voluntary survey given every two years since 1993. Over 1,800 students from 43 randomly selected Wisconsin high schools completed the anonymous 90-item questionnaire in the fall of 2021. The data from the survey shows that over one-third of all Wisconsin students reported feeling sad or hopeless almost every day for more than two weeks in a row, which is a significant increase of 5% since 2019. It's also the highest rate the state has seen since it first administered this in 93. Additionally, more than half of the students surveyed self-reported significant problems with anxiety. Supporting our children and providing lifelong skills for how to cope, regulate, and communicate their emotions is vital to their success. Emotional intelligence is not as nice to have. It's a skill that is required for them to succeed today and into their adult lives. For more than four decades, Second Step has been providing research-based programs for social emotional learning and development. They are a leader in the space in credence. Not to mention that CSD conducted its due diligence on the Second Step program in 2018, purchased it and implemented it, only to harshly withdraw it in September. The DPI report summarizes that overall, Wisconsin students generally reported experiencing significant mental health challenges while having fewer support at school and at home. The DPI goes on to make explicit statements, and I want to quote this very carefully. "The DPI encourages school districts to implement policies and practices that support belonging at school, encourage open dialogue with family members and school staff, work to ensure students can identify supportive adults at home and in school." And this is the most important part, in my opinion. "Additionally, barriers to youth mental health support must be removed to increase access and make resources readily available to all students." So, if social emotional learning is being advocated for and supported by the state of Wisconsin, I ask the crucial question to each of you on our board of Cedarburg, why do you think it's okay to eliminate SEL that supports the well-being of our children? Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak that is not signed up?
My name is Jonathan Melvin, I live at three hundred and five Old Avenue, Cratchit, Wisconsin, five three zero four. I'm a parent of two children in the district. Both of them are either middle school or high school. They're in high school and middle school. When the meeting began tonight, I came in and some data was being shown about how our students have tested recently. And a few of you commented in some areas where we aren't seeing the scores that we would like to see. Oh, I'm speaking about that, I'm sorry. That we aren't seeing the scores we would like to see. And is that possibly a result of COVID, what's going on? And we need to take a look over time and how this goes. And, you know, if you look at all of the data and all of the information, the students right now, kids, parents, everybody is emotionally is at the most difficult, it's a very difficult intersection because of the pandemic. And taking away social emotional learning at this particular time does not seem to go together with the idea that many of you are, you're concerned about the academic well-being of the district. You're concerned about scores dropping. And I know you were looking specifically at the high school when you pointed this out. It seems that taking away social emotional learning is not going to get you where you want to go in terms of the academic performance. Now, the academic performance is less important to me than the emotional well-being of our students. But other people may be more interested in the academic component. Children are suffering, as the previous speaker said, with mental health issues. If you do not feel safe, if you are having anxiety or depression, you aren't fit, you aren't going to be able to learn as well. So, if we want to see our students thrive academically, we need to deal with their emotional well-being. And to ignore their emotional well-being and expect them to make academic gains is completely irresponsible. If you need to speak to someone with mental health at Children's Hospital, if you want to get an evaluation, you have to wait a year. One year. The schools should be doing whatever they can to help the emotional well-being of our children. Thank you.
Ms. Bloomquist, I'm writing to bring my. I had planned on speaking this evening, obviously, I'm a home thing, but several things I'd like to speak on. The obvious for SCL, it's a big issue. And it's pretty sad. Cedarburg is not listening to our contact experts on the situation regarding SCL. We've been starting renaming kind of lessons and lettering down. It's pushing. Sorry. It's clearly showing what you think is important or is not important. Obviously, SCL was put in place in twenty two, twenty three. The twenty ten program was used for reasons to move forward with this renamed, repackaged water filter merger. This is pretty much an insult to the professionals who have done a lot of work to help the district. But I'm really encouraging you to go to reinstate the full curriculum as was implemented properly in twenty eighteen. I also want to mention the discussion of ACT scores. For the people who are actually in the field of education, they are well aware that the ACT is going away. And I highly recommend that Cedarburg try to find another merger to look at the progress of their students because the ACT within a matter of five to ten years will no longer be relevant. As it is, the ACT doesn't measure intelligence or as we essentially call it by the interpretation of the convention. More to measure intelligence means the ACT. I'm also curious as to why the district keeps asking for extensions from the response to the DPI findings that the district was in non-compliance with Act thirty one. Is that being done so that the district can approve a textbook this evening? Say, oh, no, no, we're not, we're not really bad at compliance because we're trying. After, two years after the text book this fall. And textbook is a good textbook, although I was very unhappy to see that. It's listed as being controversial due to things that happen to the indigenous populations in this state. It's arguing sweeping facts, so just wondering.
Anyone else wish to speak? That will close the public comment section. Takes us on to six recommendations.
This evening, we have six recommendations. Out of the first five recommendations will be presented by Mr. Rowe. He won't present.
No. I'm going to make a motion to approve A, B, C, and D, and E, which are the new classes and the new textbooks that were presented and approved, recommended approval by the Curriculum Committee.
I'll second. It was, um, we have some good, good new, uh, good new material in the class. We had a great discussion during the.
Now, if anybody has specific questions. They were presented at the meeting. Any questions or discussion? If not, I'll put the motion to approve before you. All those in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Any objections? Pastor Yanis. Takes us to I M F.
So, that's you.
All right. Last recommendation is to approve the, to approve the K through fifth grade lifelong learning course as presented for the remainder of the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year.
Just say it now.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll move to approve.
Give me a second. I'll second it. It's a lurker discussion, discussion.
I, I really appreciate all the work that Jared and everyone involved has put in. I think I could really, I like how we're trying to move forward and come up with something to get us to the end of the year. And I think great effort has been made. I, um, I still have some issue with the whole, um, company that puts out a lot of the social emotional learning. They're not an independent company that, that still exists for me. But that said, I feel like this is a really fair route to go to get us to the summer. We even look at implementing our own curriculum. It's not perfect, but it's, it's a really good, um, way to move forward.
And I agree with you. That's what I said at the committee level. It is not perfect. I look forward to our staff over the summer putting together a Cedarburg program. That's best, we're looking at the best for our kids. This will get us through this year, so.
Okay, I, I spent a lot of time looking at a lot of data. You know, it started with, at the last meeting, we were presented the state report card. And we did really do well. Every school did exceed expectations. But I looked and, um, if I'm looking at the report card, at that report card. And again, it's just the state report card, which is one benchmark. But there were, um, you know, one hundred seventy four thirds of fifth grade students out of six hundred and five that were not considered at the state level, which probably Cedarburg standards, I would say, were high, are proficient in ELA. And that's, you know, at least one, that's one in, it's one in four students, which is a lot. And I just look at, um, you know, our class day is very, it's limited and it's very fixed. And over the years, it seems there's always things added to the class day, which, um, takes away from just the basics and the reading, the math, and so forth. Um, I guess I'm a big proponent of incorporating, I'm not saying not to teach this curriculum, but I'm a big proponent in incorporating it into the classroom setting. I looked at the book, The Circle of Family Sharing, that was just approved. And I think that's a great book to incorporate some of the concepts of taking care of your neighbor, respecting your neighbor. And I just think for a K through five setting, it might sink in a lot more to the kids to have those concepts incorporated into the everyday classroom. I was able to tour the, um, schools with Jared and the three elementary schools. And one teacher was meeting with their class and she was reading a story to them. And then she, you know, talked about how we all have to respect and treat each other with kindness. And I think that speaks volumes. So I am a big proponent in, I guess, incorporating it into the classroom instead of setting aside our precious classroom time and teaching this. Another, um, concern I had, I guess, is that when I was looking at lifelong learning skills and the report cards and so forth, and again, I just picked third grade because, um, there was a lot of material and I think you brought material and work. And if you looked at the report cards, the lowest, um, percentage of kids, you know, being an average or above, was displays and produces quality work. That's really important in learning and everything you do. And that was at eighty two percent. And I don't see any, any of a lot of these other skills that are in the matrix in these programs. So I was really hoping to see more of that incorporated as well. You know, leadership, we've talked a lot about grit. And I just feel a lot of these lessons, they can be expanded on. We did approve bullying, which covers a lot too. So I guess I'm dragging on. I did spend a lot of time on that and that's where I am. Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, I had one, um, some comments. I really do appreciate the work that Dr. Clark and other, um, district staff put into coming up with a long-term plan of how the Cedarburg School District wants to teach lifelong learning skills. And looking at the focus being those report card descriptors on what the kids are actually graded on and evaluated on and seeing how, um, starting next school year and beyond, that we can really be supporting kids to be meeting, uh, those standards. So I'm really enthusiastic about what's coming in the future. That said, I do, the same concerns that I had the first time that we discussed this, uh, this fall at the Curriculum Committee, uh, meeting are still, are still there. And I can only evaluate it as a new board member who came on after, um, this was implemented in twenty eighteen. I just have to think, you know, what, what, how would I, you know, vote on this? You know, yes or no, being on the curriculum committee and also on the full board. You know, does second step truly support these lifelong learning skills that we are currently evaluating the students on? Is it the best resource and tool to do that? And, you know, I have some of the same concerns and questions that Laura has. So looking at like the lifelong learning skill descriptors and things that come up time and again for the elementary school students utilizes appropriate work skills. Manages time, that's a big one. There's a lot of like personal responsibility. And I appreciate the effort that went into kind of mapping out how the lessons suggested for this year. You know, tie in in some way to PPIS or to these. But I'm not, not seeing it for, um, for all the lessons. And just seeing that many of the lessons really delve more into like a psychology aspect of it that I'm just not a hundred percent comfortable with being taught in a whole, um, a whole classroom environment, knowing that some of these emotional issues that may be affecting, uh, the students' work in elementary schools need, need to ultimately be handled at an individual basis. So when we're getting into things, delving into the psychological aspect of things and saying that this is for the whole class, um, you know, regardless of what's going on with each student, I get a little bit uncomfortable with that. So that's kind of where some of my hesitation lies. But definitely looking forward to the Cedarburg approach in the future.
Can I just let you know, there was a motion made by me, seconded by Kevin, to approve the lifelong learning course as presented by Dr. Clark. So that's, we're discussing that now. So other comments?
I wanted to add one more that I forgot. We still do have that PVI system, which, you know, a teacher can, if a child is having a few issues, you know, the teacher sets a goal in the morning and, you know, follows up in the afternoon. And we will never, you know, totally ignore students. If there is a student that really needs help, we will direct them to the person that needs help. It's never that it's not ignored. We're kind of discussing what is going to be taught in the curriculum of the everyday setting. So I would want to say we can never ever ignore a student who needs help.
I agree with that, Laura. I'm glad that you brought that up. I heard tonight a public comment saying that, um, if you don't want kind of something along the lines of, if you don't support the second step lessons, you're ignoring children's emotional well-being. I was at Parkview, uh, this week on a, a tour and probably headed in different classrooms and sitting in on two different classrooms. And gosh, what a wonderful environment that was to be in where there's artwork and things on the wall about the golden rule and treating others the way you want to be treated and kindness and respect. And I saw both through the classroom hallways and also in the classrooms and also just how I saw the students and the teachers and staff interacting where I got that sense that there was that emotional support and knowing that we have staff in place and when emotional issues arise in students, it can be addressed as appropriate with the teacher, with staff, with the school sites, that type of thing. So I agree.
I just had a question. The Curriculum Committee, um, chatting about the students back and moving forward, that's how it's here.
But it's here without a recommendation.
Without a recommendation.
We unanimously agreed to forward it to the board for board consideration without a recommendation.
I'd like to make a few comments. I'm sorry, I was out of town and just got back in town and wanted to speak on this important topic. So I, I missed most of the discussion, I apologize. But like I said, the Curriculum Committee, uh, two times ago, the topics that are before us with second step or the version that Dr. Clark has recommended are topics that come up all the time in, in a workplace. And, um, and while I agree that every student has an issue that needs to be dealt with with the curriculum that's being presented, it's, these are still good practices for the teachers and administrators to have a consistent approach and a unified approach in common language. And at work, the things that we talk about are mainly about behavioral things. They're not about whether a person is good at their job. It's typically about why aren't you getting along? Why aren't you able to understand other people's feelings? They are all the soft skills, the durable skills. And so, those are the things that I believe are not, um, being taken away from parents but are being reinforced by what, um, what the teachers are allowed to, to reinforce. Just like I said a few weeks back, um, teachers hope that parents are reinforcing and teaching and supplementing all the math and reading, writing skills at home. They, I would hope as a parent, that when we drop our children off, we want the administrators and the staff to reinforce things that are being taught at home. Um, I know as a parent, I have three wonderful grown adults, but I didn't sit down and say to them, hey, tonight we're going to talk about, hey, tonight we're going to talk about soft skills. We can do that. We address things when they came up, but I'd like to think I was a good parent not doing that. But I didn't have a uniform way of making sure my kids were taught things that matters in, in life. So if Dr. Clark and the staff are presenting something, I'm on board. Just when the shit stops.
Other comments?
Oh, yeah. I would just like to, uh, thank Dr. Clark and your team for, um, working with the committee to, um, put this in, basically to put into the current form of it, uh, the proposal. I, I appreciate how, it seems like we, to Laura's point, I think there's a, there is a pretty good focus on some of the academic stuff, um, or things. or things that will impact academics, such as the problem-solving skills and things of that nature. I agree with Rick too, that it's not perfect. And I, I look forward to the, um, to the Cedarburg program, um, bringing that together. And so I, to me, it's a, I guess it's an acceptable kind of bridge to finish up the year. Again, not perfect, but, um, rather better to have than not.
Other comments?
I would like to add, I think that many of the skills that are, the target skills are something the whole community would, or many in the community would agree on great things, about character and ethics and handling your emotions. Laura brought up grit and leadership skills. Those are all incredibly great traits that I would hope kids, when they leave any school district somehow, I don't know how they're going to learn them, but having that ability, I think, is, is really important. Just like when we have, uh, later in life, we see kids who are incredible athletes, but we still want them to take math and science and English classes. And we have kids who are incredibly good in math, but we still want them to take FIED and swimming and all these other courses. It's part of being a well-rounded individual and not just getting focused on one area of expertise when you're 13 years old or 12 years old or five years old. I think this is part of that, and I don't think it's as controversial, at least for me, at all. I think it's an important goal to have to teach these positive skills. Because, right, whether it's in workplace or, um, in an office setting, these are all wonderful skills you want to have in your coworkers. Not everybody has it. I mean, some people are, have some of it, not all of it. Um, and it's too late, I think, a lot of times, to try to get people to change their ways when they're, you know, 62 years old or something like that. It's not going to happen. I do think having the Cedarburg version of it is a great solution because in looking at the programs, I thought the 2010 versions, uh, were okay personally. I, it, it really comes down to how things are taught. Because anyone can read a sentence. It's really how you interpret it, how you reinforce it in the classroom that's critical. So I challenge the team working on the Cedarburg version to come up with these wonderful characteristics and explain it in a way that's helpful for the students, for all students, and that it's not controversial in the end. That it's not saying it's swinging one way or another way, but it's just teaching people to be, you know, about having good character and not bullying people and having empathy. Why you want to help out the person next to you. Uh, it's just good things to have in life. When you're at the grocery store and you let someone jump in front of you because they've got two items and you've got a cart full of things, those are the things you see in Cedarburg that are wonderful. And you don't somehow tell people to do it. They just have that in themselves. So I'm hoping that the Cedarburg system is, I think it's a great solution. And I appreciate all the time and effort and the last few nights that probably went into the whole team of getting it there. But your work has just started. There's still work. It seems like you've figured it all out. But I think it's important to teach this to kids.
I guess the other thing I would add too is that a lot of the, the, um, material might not be applicable to every kid. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff that, that you might, you know, a parent might, you know, this is not, might be the lead or whatever. This isn't, there's an opt-out on this. So if people, the proposal would include, right, um, the ability to opt-out in your reading or have a different, um, different content during that time period if they felt that the kids and the child or student didn't need or would benefit from it.
I mean, you kind of have that now in, in, let's say, a math class, even if you're grouped by ability. If they're going through something and the, the one kid has just mastered mathematics, knows that, they, "I got this." You know, but everybody else in my team is catching up now. It's not the end of the world to sit through and reinforce it, you know. But if they want to opt-out, I.
Thanks. You have the right thought.
Right.
Other discussion? If not, I'll put the motion to approve before you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
They may.
Show two opposed.
Was with an.
And Laura, right?
Yes. Thank you.
So pass this back to just. Uh, next is committee reports, curriculum committee. I think we've handled everything tonight already that was on the agenda. So I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No one opposed? We got our adjourn. Happy holidays.
Hi, thank you.